Well then, yes, it's one o'clock and with that I will open the meeting. Welcome everybody today, January 3rd, and wish everybody a happy new year. I know we'll be having a longer meeting in person next week. And the purpose of this meeting is really just on an emergency basis, which we'll get to that briefly or quickly here. In the meantime, I'd ask Madam Clerk to call the roll, establish a quorum, and read the Metro Cable statement.
Okay, members Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
And you have a quorum. I'm going to go ahead and read the statement now. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 6th on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Board members and county staff are participating in today's meeting by way of Zoom. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly, and you may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Evans. Now, I ask everybody to join us and for the pleasure of allegiance. Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I have a brief opening statement. The purpose of today's special meeting is related to the ratification of a local proclamation of emergency as a result of the winter storms and its threat to public health and safety. Madam Clerk, please read the first agenda item.
Okay, item one is the ratification of local proclamation of emergency due to winter storms.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Mary Jo Flynn, who directs our Office of Emergency Services.
Well, members of the Board, thank you very much for convening this special meeting. I'm Mary Jo Flynn Evans. I'm the Chief of Emergency Services, acting as your Director of Emergency Services for the Emergency Operations Center. The Emergency Operations Center has been activated since Wednesday, December 28th, last year technically, and on December 31st, we activated at the highest level, and we're experiencing strong atmospheric rivers that ended up causing widespread flooding, stress on levees, levee overtopping, local flooding, and major flooding conditions, toppled trees on roads and homes, water rescues and evacuations, and so much more. Additional storms are expected starting tomorrow, and they will bring a heavy impact to the area and possibly beyond. We are seeing storms or anticipating storms possibly through this weekend and into early next week. We do have Weather Service representation in our Emergency Operations Center, and we're getting briefed regularly on the conditions that we should expect and plan for. The continued burden on our levee systems, first responders, emergency operations personnel, and special districts require the full authority and support of a proclamation of emergency. And on December 31st, 2022, the county issued a proclamation of local state of emergency for winter storms. We are recommending today that the Board ratify that proclamation and extend the proclamation for the next 60 days. Under state law, we will be required to review that proclamation and either recommend renewal or termination at least every 60 days. Wanted to thank you, and we do have some department directors available to address any specific questions to their roles. I did want to remind everyone, we are in an active activation of the Emergency Operations Center, and I hope not to delay any of the department directors who need to attend to other duties. So if there's questions we cannot address, we will happily get back to you at your next convened meeting and try and answer questions as you may have them, and we are able to provide information. So right now, I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have for me.
Okay, thank you, Mary Jo. Appreciate that. I'll turn to my fellow Board members to see if there are any questions or comments. See any hands raised. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Any?
We do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay, so just, I have a few questions for you, Mary Jo. Maybe you could just help me understand this a little bit, because I've had, I think, probably a lot of my colleagues, and I have people, some questions about just kind of the process in terms of the sheltering aspect of our emergency response. And I understand, you know, a proclamation is obviously necessary to make sure we get the resources, the coordination, and certainly the funding to deal with this local emergency. Can you talk a little bit about, and I know the county has put a little bit of information out about this? I understand, I've had, I think, probably a lot of my colleagues, and I have people just kind of the process.
If you'll excuse me just a second, somebody turn that on, and it's, I have the audio in my office, just a moment, please.
Chair Desmond, my apology, there are no hands raised on the Zoom. I didn't realize that's what you were asking me.
No, that's what I was checking. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. I can see the screen now. I'm happy to help.
Well, Director Hume has his hand now raised now, but I'll wait till Mary Jo gets back and asks my questions, and I'll turn it over to, oh, not Director Hume, Supervisor Hume, sorry about that.
Thank you for that correction, Chair.
Well, I apologize for that. I was not expecting that.
Well, no problem. I'll just get back to Mary Jo. My question is about, specifically about our sheltering operations, emergency sheltering for this upcoming storm. And I've had some questions, some discussions with county staff as recently as this morning. But can you talk a little bit about what the county is doing in terms of emergency sheltering and what would be the next step in terms of state-level assistance for our emergency sheltering needs?
Well, the state is already providing assistance in terms of a liaison to our Emergency Operations Center. They are also willing and able to help us coordinate additional needs as they come about. Right now, we have one center that has space for 10 available. That's North A. Sorry, I just ran down the hallway a little bit, catching my breath. North A has 10 spaces available, and we have the Wackford Center that is currently only has about four or five people utilizing that location. So we're trying to focus our efforts on making sure that the need goes to those open and available locations. We do have contingency plans for other locations. One of those other locations is Cal Expo, but it's not our only contingency plan. So what we anticipate is that as we meet or potentially exceed the need at the two locations that have space and availability, we would go to those backup locations. It might be Cal Expo, but there's also the possibility of opening additional centers if needed in the community.
Okay, I appreciate that. Just a little, a couple of follow-up questions. I mean, it seems to me, obviously, the ones who will be most impacted by this are homeless population, which is obviously many, many people being impacted in the South County and will need assistance, I imagine, with sheltering. But in terms of the homeless community in particular, Mary Jo, is the, and I know, and so any one of your department heads may want to weigh in on this. I mean, I know we've already had our plan much more successful this year in terms of just winter sheltering in general, but in terms of preparing for this storm, question number one is, what are we doing to help with transportation needs? And then number two, when we get to the point, Mary Jo, or Anne, or whomever, where we get to capacity, will we, will there be some delay before we can open up the next site, or will it be pretty seamless and ready to go as we exceed capacity?
Well, first, did you want me to answer that question or turn it to any?
Why don't you answer, Mary Jo, and I'll pick up if need be.
Okay, so in terms of the seamlessness, right now, Cal Expo is our primary backup location. We have prepositioned a shelter trailer with resources at that location. We have an MOU in place with Cal Expo. We also have the ability to coordinate with the state on utilization of Cal Expo as well. So that is already set up and in place. The only element that we would need to activate to engage Cal Expo is staffing. But I want to caution you in knowing that we don't know what to expect with this next storm. Cal Expo may ultimately not be the most ideal location if it sustains damage. So we're going to have to take a look at conditions as the storm arrives. This is going to be a very impactful storm with high winds. We expect trees to come down, and we want to make sure wherever we're sending people, it's going to be safe.
Right. I appreciate that, Mary Jo, and I completely understand that. I just want to give you a chance, you know, want to give you a chance to reassure the public and others who are listening and are asking about this, is the fact that we have not opened some of these other contingency sites yet is not going to result in any kind of delay in getting people into shelter.
Correct. We do have that space available and ready. We also have a number of partners who are standing at the ready to assist us.
And then could you comment briefly, this will be my last question, on the transportation? And I know we've been providing some additional transportation to help the unsheltered in the community. Can you talk a little bit about that and what some of our plans are to help people get to the shelter, shelters that we're offering?
We've engaged some of the departments, and maybe some of the departments might be able to speak better on that, because I haven't been engaged in the finer details of that. But there have been transportation plans put in place to get people to North A. In the Wilton area, where we were trying to actively move people to sheltering to the Wackford Center, there was a shuttle bus set up. As people were being rescued and removed from their cars and belongings, they were taken to the Wackford Center via this shuttle. So those transportation plans are in place. Sometimes they're a little fluid, depending upon the need, but we do engage with the different providers to help get those services, and it's possible that one of the departments might have additional detail on the utilization of the transportation for those locations.
So let me just ask if either Ethan or Emily are on and maybe could speak to that?
Good afternoon, Chair. This is Ethan from the Department of Human Assistance. One of the, part of what we have is our navigators are going out. We currently have 155 individuals who are in motel rooms. Our navigators are out in the field, ensuring that we can get more folks in and working with our hotels. And part of that is Lyft and Uber have been amazing partners in getting folks to the motels. So that's one of the things we've done. Back to what Mary Jo also said was, we were able to set up some transportation in the South area, down near Wilton, in order to get folks moved in and out of the area. So it's one of the things that we continue to look at, and that's all I have to report from this point.
Okay. Thank you, Ethan. I appreciate that. In terms of the outreach and engagement, you know, I'm, I'm assuming maybe Supervisor Hume may have questions about the issues in his district in particular, but along the Parkway, that outreach and engagement in some of these larger homeless camps that maybe we anticipate might be impacted by the storm, can you explain some of those efforts, either Ethan or Emily?
Sure. This is Emily Halken, Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, and definitely hear you. We've been working closely with Liz Bellis and her staff to determine areas where there's known encampments that are expected to or have already flooded, and focus some of our outreach teams, including behavioral health outreach teams, contracted navigators, and navigators that are embedded within some of our shelters into those encamps, encampments. So we started on Friday with Bannon Island, which is a very impacted camp right off the Garden Highway. Then we worked additionally in the River District area, right up against the bike trail of those areas. And today, we've been working with the Rangers and some of the other areas that are known to flood or already have flooded, like the Howe Avenue access point. We've heard of Camp Pollock, and we're, we're trying to discern with the Rangers' help where the most critical areas are, and our outreach workers, both contracted and county staff, are ready and able to go out with the support of law enforcement.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. That's all, that's all I have. I'll turn it to Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, you know, obviously, it's been very difficult not being home and having to watch this from afar and feeling a little helpless. And I remember '86, I remember '97, and I've been watching the video this year, and it's devastating what's going on out in Wilton and South County and down into the Delta. I first want to just express my sincere appreciation for all of the folks in our Emergency Operations Center, all of the first responders, all of our partners, SMD and others that are out there, trying to get life back to normal as quickly as possible for these folks. I want to extend my solace to the family of the gentleman that died on Dillard Road. That's a tragic situation, and I, watching the video, you know, that water, that's some of the fastest-moving water I've seen shedding across like that ever. So I don't have a comment, per se, other than I think we need to circle back and follow up after declaring the state of emergency and issue another resolution to pursue the relief funding from FEMA and make sure that we start getting support outreach to our federal representatives, and then really bird dog that to make sure that that money comes through and that as soon as the sun starts shining, they don't forget about us here in Sacramento County. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, if I might comment one more?
Yes, please, Mary Jo.
Thank you. I did want to address the FEMA component of it. This afternoon, I will be sending a letter to the Caloese Director requesting state assistance and federal assistance for this. We are putting in place the initial damage estimates, which will ultimately be required. A majority of the estimates won't be able to be completed until the water recedes, but I just wanted to reassure the Board that we will be asking for that relief from our state and federal partners. I'm not sure that it requires a resolution, but I'm happy to support that request that the Board does. I do know that a letter attached to the proclamation as an addendum has worked in the past.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair Desmond. Mary Jo, I wanted to ask you a question regarding the levee in Wilton. It seemed like as this was playing out, and they were announcing this is an imminent, you know, potentially imminent, you know, break in the levee. Do we have any other particular, specific areas among our levee systems that we're watchdogging that are areas that are potentially imminent flooding that we're going to be announcing or, you know, warning, giving people heads up and a warning about?
So there is an active flood watch product by the National Weather Service. As I mentioned at the beginning, we are anticipating a fairly strong storm starting tomorrow. Its highest impact is going to be heavy rain and very, very strong winds, not necessarily in that confined two-hour period that we experienced Saturday evening. This is more throughout the day. So I'm concerned about sustained gusts of wind throughout the day that could topple trees. So I would encourage the public who might be listening to prepare now, take this time to prepare for power outages, to stay off the roads, to call 311 if there is trees in the roadway or damage that they see that needs to be reported, and get those taken care of. And use today on what may be our little break in the rain to resupply if you need to and are able to, and make sure you have food and water for your family and a way to stay warm. Certainly, the shelters are always available for anyone who has that specific need, but the majority of the population may be able to shelter on their own at home with the right resources.
So no specific levee areas that are, that we're watchdogging?
Correct. No specific levee areas. We do have, we are working with the reclamation districts and the engineers that support the reclamation districts. They are out on patrols, and we are, you know, working on logistics requests and supplies that come through the Emergency Operations Center to support their needs.
And then finally, I just want to say, I think, in, a few years ago, in my, at my home, in one of these windstorms, a whole half of one of my trees came down. And this, yesterday, my neighbor down the street, a whole big, huge limb of the tree just came down and just covered the whole street. So I encourage people, if you normally park under your tree, because that's where the shade is, to maybe move your car forward a little out from under the trees, because it seems like those trees that are older, sometimes they have a weak spot, and in the high winds, they, they come down. And thank you, Mary Jo, and everyone for all your hard work. I know you've been working hard over the last few days. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. And thank you for, you know, Mary Jo, thanks for giving that information. I think that's crucial, and Supervisor Frost as well. I mean, a lot of people are calling my office about what clogged gutters right now and trees that are down that are not posing an immediate hazard into a roadway or to a power line. And we know our county crews, SMD crews, other special district utility crews are so tied up. We're telling people, hey, you're going to have to call maybe a private tree service. But just people need to be cognizant of the big need and the big demand on, on all of the municipal crews out there right now moving trees and debris. And that makes me think, Mary Jo, will you be, will our county DOC be pushing out regular messages so maybe our offices can then turn that around and push that out to our, on social media and email groups?
Yes, in fact, I've got a lot of requests on how you might be able to help our efforts. And that is exactly one way we could utilize your services. Our public information officers are staffing what we call our Joint Information Center. We bring together all of the information into one location, try and vet it to the best of our ability, and then disseminate it out so the public can be made aware. They're regularly making updates to social media, the news stories on the county websites, and to the media. They've even received inquiries from national media. So we will certainly make sure that those messages get out to your offices from our PIOs, and that they're in a format that you can readily share with your communities, because as elected representatives, you are our connection in emergency management to the community, and we need you in that connection to make sure we're meeting the needs and anticipating the needs of the community. So I want to thank you for your service and making sure that we get this community back to a healthy state as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Okay, I don't see any other supervisors with comments, so then I will move to public comments. Madam Clerk, are there any callers on this item?
We do have a couple of public callers, and so when you're ready, I'll have them transfer the callers in, and we are at two minutes per public comment.
Two minutes, and I will let you handle the public comment, right, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, please start.
Okay, please transfer the first caller. Hi, caller. If you could mute the meeting in the background, please.
Gotcha.
Okay, so you have two minutes to make your comment. I'll give you a warning at 15 seconds to the two-minute warning there, and please start with your comments.
Very cool. Thanks, hello. Good morning, Board. This is McKenzie Welkin, and I'm a community organizer for Decarcerate Sacramento. I'm calling in today to speak on the state of emergency. I could speak on the fact that the next two storms are going to be worse than the last. I could speak on the fact that due to climate change, this is our new normal, and that this is only going to get worse. But because this is our new normal and it's going to get worse, I'll have the opportunity and instead speak on the right now. And because I'm with Decarcerate Sacramento, I want to speak about the evacuation of RCCC and the fact that almost 1,000 people made their way over to an already dilapidated and overpopulated main jail, and have now put folks in prisons in and other counties. We've already seen the effects of what overcrowding and the unchecked power of a policy and procedures inside the jails look like. It gets us constitutional violations and harms that have us currently under federal consent decree. So the questions that are being posed today, and what are the, are things like this. What are the impact of displacing RCCC residents on due process? What is the current staffing levels of DA, of the DAs, the courts, probation, public defenders during this holiday period? How will the flood and low staffing levels, the sheriff being away from the jail to emergency support, et cetera, impact the current jail reduction efforts? You know, assuming courts and jail bookings may be backed up, can the county explore bringing back some compassionate release policies similar to COVID? Organizations like Decarcerate Sacramento sufficiently helped in those efforts, and we would love to do so again. You know, I, because the honest question is, like, to what extent will conditions inside the main jail be worsened with the overcrowding due to the RCCC displacement? And do you all even have policies and procedures related to how to handle justice?
15 seconds.
Handle justice systems during, like, flood emergencies, let alone other ones. So again, we would like to suggest compassionate releases, working with the DA, the public defenders, and other orgs to get that done.
Thank you for your comment.
And, that's the red.
Thank you. Hi, caller. Please mute the meeting in the background. You have two minutes to make a public comment, and I'll give you a warning at 15 seconds to the two-minute mark. Please start with your comment.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Hi, this is Lynn Berkeley, Justice, Berkeley Baskin, Justice to Job. I just want to call in and thank the Board and the county for really addressing this quickly. I heard the comments earlier about the safety of our unsheltered residents. Thank you, thank you, thank you for making sure that they remain safe. And also, I want to remind us that three years, almost three years ago, we had this emergency with COVID, and it did impact our jails, and we have a whole new group of people now making decisions. So I just was hoping to remind the Board that, you know, Eric Jones was not here then, of course, now we have a new DA, we have a new sheriff. And previously for COVID, we were able to release people safely, I believe 1,100 people with Steve Garrett, the public defender, Scott Jones, the DA, I mean, Scott Jones and the DA, by, you know, by actually working together to create a plan of release, which of course is already consistent with this plan that Eric Jones is already creating and the Board has already agreed with, but perhaps it could be implemented much more quickly since we are up against this emergency, and it was very successful the last time. So just keeping it short, thank you very much for all you're doing, and I'm hoping that you recognize too that the last time they worked with community, I know Decarcerate Sacramento and a lot of other organizations showed up at the jail to help with that release. And now, of course, the Board has supported the Exodus Project, which could even help more. So here we are, three years later.
15 seconds.
We put a lot of things together, and thanks to the Board, we've created some community-based options. So I'm hoping that you can consider these as moving forward quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes your comments for item one.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Have we received any written comments?
To my knowledge, we have not received written comments just yet, but I will, as you move on, I will have staff confirm for me via the Skype if they could. I will ask Amanda if she could confirm that. I know you've received comments for off-agenda.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you, Flo, and I'll turn it back to my Board members for a motion on this item.
I'll go ahead and move the item. Frost?
Hume, second.
We have a motion, a second, I don't see any more requests for comments or questions from board members, please call the roll.
Supervisors Kennedy? Frost?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you, Mary Jo, and I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues, thank you for all your work you're doing, I know you've been working really around the clock, and please let us know anything we can do to help you, and I know we'll be talking more about this. Okay, let's move on to off agenda, public comments relating to matters not on the agenda, ask the Madam Clerk if there are any callers.
Mr. Chair, as I have to jump on a plane, this is Supervisor Kennedy, I'm going to jump off this caller at this time.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy, have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
And Chair Desmond, I do want to go on record, we did not receive any written comments for item one, and we do have a caller or two for off agenda, so I'll ask if we could have the first caller transfer in, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes, and I'll give you a warning at the 15 second mark.
Hi, my name is Honda, I live in my current home for about 22 years now, the last couple months, I have seen more and more homeless encampment moving in behind my backyard on Geneva Point Road in Sacramento, I can see them, I can hear them, I witnessed their illegal activities, stealing drugs, sex trafficking, violent act, throwing beer bottles at cars driving by, at people, I hear gunshots sound at night, hostile yelling, screaming, cussing, fighting, I have called the police on several occasions with no results. I'm very concerned for my family's safety, I can see everything going on from my backyard, and I'm also concerned for the middle school, Edward Harris, and the high school, Monterey Town High School student walking by them to and from school on a daily basis, I've seen them yelling and cussing at the kids walking by them, I need your help, as it is becoming worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Oh, that was the last caller, so that concludes your off agenda comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I assume we don't have any written comments off agenda?
You have received written comments, and those were distributed via email, and they will be filed in the record.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much, okay, then move along to separate items, our county exec comments, Ms. CEO, you have any comments, Anne?
Well, thank you, Supervisor Desmond, and I just very briefly want to reiterate the thanks that others have offered to Mary Jo, Mary Jo has been working around the clock, sleeping on a cot in her office from time to time, as well as everyone else who's working at the EOC, you know, we have many, many folks, and, you know, I wanted to name them all, but there's just too many, and I was afraid I would forget somebody, but just know that I have tremendous gratitude for everyone who's working at the EOC, and everyone who's working out in the community to try and help us mitigate the impacts of this weather event, so thank you very much.
All right, wonderful, thank you, Anne, any, any comments or questions from my colleagues? Okay, I don't see any, and I don't believe we have any further business today, and so with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 1:35, thank you, everybody, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.